Want to be on time for our TV viewers? Okay, thank you, Michael. So, we've called it to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember Degree.
Present.
Mayor Protam Ervin.
Here.
Mayor Nyheart.
Present. And Councilmember O'Neal will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And close session report. No reportable action? Okay, that brings us to the consent calendar. And I actually have a couple of people who want to comment on the consent calendar. And the first card that I had, that it was right here, was Treece Dyer, I believe, on item number three.
Can I comment real quick?
Sure.
I just wanted to pull number three from the consent calendar.
Okay.
Before the comments. Just in case there's any people wanting to comment on that, we'll do it in that agenda period.
Okay, then let's put it under consideration.
It's fine with me.
All right. So I'll save that for consideration. All right. Is that, with that amendment, what do I hear?
What is the name of that item, sorry?
The item is seal bids on the warning lights on crosswalks.
You want a motion, right?
There are two cards on that same item.
Oh, okay.
Just didn't have the number on it. Okay.
So then do I follow, there's no cards now on the consent calendar? So it was just on item three?
Correct.
Okay, I'll approve the consent calendar, or make a motion to approve the consent calendar, except for item number three, which was pulled.
Okay. And Councilmember O'Neal?
Second.
Okay. Please vote. And the consent calendar minus item number three passes five to zero. Okay. We have several special presentations tonight. And our first one is a bit of a retirement. A bit. Like officially. Sandra, you gonna come up? Okay. Sandra McClellan. Where, McClellan? McClellan. Am I doing right? Okay. We're gonna have to say goodbye to you. Yes. Okay. Well, I have a proclamation, and I want to thank you very much for your service. Whereas Sandra McClellan is retiring from the City of Pacifica effective October 3rd, and whereas Sandra began her career with the City of Pacifica July 2002 as Assistant Finance Director, and whereas Sandra is being recognized for her loyal and dedicated service to the city for the past 12 years, and whereas Sandra has consistently performed to the best of her ability during her tenure as Assistant Finance Director and supervised staff in both accounting and information technology divisions, and whereas Sandra's leadership in the Finance Department has received awards from the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers for outstanding financial reporting and certificates of achievement for excellence in financial reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association to those government units whose comprehensive annual financial reports, which is the CAFRA that we talk about, achieve the highest standards in government accounting and financial reporting. And whereas Sandra has held a certified public accountant license, completed a master's program in public administration, and has been a member of the Government Finance Officers Association and the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers. And whereas during the financial software conversion, Sandra was instrumental in reconciling the imported data into the new system, ensuring the accuracy of the information. And whereas Sandra has provided assistance to the Emergency Operations Center in San Bruno during the gas line explosion disaster, as well as working countless hours beyond her 40 hours per week. Now, therefore, I, Mary Ann Nyheart, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby extend to Sandra McClellan a deep appreciation for her service to the city and our very best wishes for your success in future endeavors. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I just want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to work for you, for the city, and with so many wonderful employees. And thank you.
Great. Thank you. Do you want to come and get this? Do you want to photo op?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Why don't we do, why don't?
We've done it for anything else. Come on in.
You know, if we pulled these back a little bit, we could cut through.
Yeah, actually.
[laughing]
Here you go. That's back.
Bounce, yeah.
Very bad. Bounce. Whoops. Here we can squeeze them.
Are you pushing the button? Push the white one. That's her phone. Okay, old enough to need it in college. Sorry, people at home. It is. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. No, it won't flash. Are you pushing the button? Push the white one. That's her phone. Okay, old enough to need it in college. Sorry, people at home. It is. One, two, three. One more. There you go. We got it. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you.
Looking out for my safety.
Okay. I got my hands.
Okay. Our second presentation is already ready up there. It's about Fire Prevention Month. Annually, we have to hear from you.
Good evening, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna shorten this one up a little bit.
Please.
Because I usually read just the high points. But Sandra was special.
Yes.
The City of Pacifica and North Coast County Fire Authority is committed to assuring safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. Serious public safety concerns, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. Fire departments respond to 370,000 home structure fires. I assume that's annually. And these fires can cause 13,910 civilian injuries, 2,520 civilian deaths, and 6.9 million, billion, in direct damage. Working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires. And I think that's probably a focus of what you're about this month in terms of prevention. Ionized smoke alarms are generally more responsible, responsive to flaming fires, and photoelectric alarms are generally more responsive to smoldering fires. For the best protection or where extra time is needed to awaken or assist others, both types of alarms, the combination should be used. The city residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety, and thank you for your support in providing those. Residents who have planned and practiced home escape are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. 2014 Fire Prevention Month theme is working smoke alarms save lives. Test yours every month. So as Mary Ann Nyheart as Mayor, I proclaim October 2014 as Fire Prevention Month and encourage all City of Pacifica residents to heed the important messages of fire prevention and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of fire and emergency services.
Thank you, Mayor Nyheart.
Thank you.
Council. Yes, October is Fire Prevention Month, but really, fire prevention is a year-long effort. And most important, this year, we are again stressing smoke detectors because the type of smoke detector that is now out there is substantially different than in past, where we've always stressed changing the batteries in smoke detectors every, well, we used to say every Christmas, but usually every six months when it's the change of the clocks. In the future, all smoke detectors will have 10-year batteries. You will not have to change them. And so as you replace smoke detectors going forward, they will have 10-year batteries. At the end of 10 years, you only need to replace the whole smoke detector. So that was one important change in that technology. Additionally, carbon monoxide detectors are mandated now, and they also, like smoke detectors, have preventative focus in warning you before there's a problem. So we would hope that you both install both the smoke detectors and the carbon monoxide detectors. They are very, very helpful in saving lives and reducing damage to property. Additionally, during Fire Prevention Month, for the first two months, two weeks of the year, we'll be going to all the schools in North County Fire Authority. And those appointments are being scheduled now with the engine companies and the different classes and schoolrooms. And as we always do, we will host an open house. This year will be on the 18th at Station 72. They always do a very good job, and we invite the community and the council to come down and enjoy the festivities. And with that, I'd like to thank the council, city employees, city management, and the community for their support of the fire service. Thank you.
You know, we've got lights. Okay. Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mayor Nyheart. I just wanted to say thank you for all the prevention work that you do now and throughout the year. And I know that preventions, you've gotten so good at prevention that you've almost, you have so many less fires now than, you know, happened decades prior, and that goes a lot to all the work that's been done to make people aware of what they should be and shouldn't be doing. And then I also want to thank you for the emergency services that you guys provide as well. Just recently, we had a personal incident where the fire services helped our family. And I won't go into too much detail, but guys are absolutely wonderful and very professional, and just, we couldn't be more happy. So please pass along my thanks on that regard, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Thank you for, on behalf of our community, for all the incredibly hard work that you do and keeping us safe. And we know how hard you all work, and greatly appreciate it, and really appreciate you coming here and reminding the community of all the important things that they should be doing around the House. It's incredibly important as we go forward. So thank you very much for everything.
Thank you, Kim. Councilmember?
Councilmember Degree.
Sorry, I didn't hear the date. Did you give a date for the teach-in at the?
It's the first through the 17th will be in the schools, and those are scheduled individually with the schools themselves. And then on the 18th, which is a Saturday, there'll be the open house at Station 72 on Lindemar.
Thank you. And Councilmember O'Neal?
I also wanted to say thank you for all the services you do. And also, it was interesting, the last meeting with the North County Fire Authority that we had, we had like a parking lot chat afterwards with the chief. And one of the challenges they do face is keeping our fire insurance rates cheaper because we have so much greenery and green space that that's looked frowned upon in terms of the insurance companies that, like, we could be Eldorado Hills or something like that. So, but he does everything he can to try to keep those rates as cheap as he can. So I just wanted to say thank you for your efforts in that regard also.
You're welcome.
Well, and I'll finish by adding, I was gonna actually mention, because in a couple of ways, we're gonna talk a bit about water. And with the drought, I certainly want to encourage people, along with your fire alarms, to make sure you keep brush cleared up and those sorts of things, because certainly households, we have to be careful in this kind of drought weather.
Yes.
But thank you very much for everything you do. And you know I have a personal, got to see you up close and personal, right when I first started on council, so you do an outstanding job.
We did find that.
Huh? I know.
We did find that.
I know. It was a tragic night. I don't want to go through it again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I want to call up, it's that favorite time of year for me. We have the Fog Fest presentation with Larry Passmore. I assume you're bringing some of your board members with you?
Certainly, come on.
Yeah, what the heck. Kathy and I saw others out there.
Good evening, council. My name is Larry Passmore. I'm president of the Fog Fest organizing group. I would just like to say thank you again for letting us use the town in the Sharp Park area for, it is this week, on the 27th and 28th. This is our 29th anniversary, so we're really looking forward to the 30th. And I hope, I'm really hoping that the streetscape is somewhat complete by then, so that'd be really nice to have that.
Okay.
Because we have some really good ideas for the area. First of all, I would like to just say, hey, if everyone's on Facebook, we just hit 3,000 about a week and a half ago. So if you guys are all on Facebook, if you guys can like us, and also repost the poster, Carol asked me to say that. Carol's a comacho. She's our publicity specialist, probably. So some of the highlights for this year is we are bringing back the sand sculpture exhibit, and that guy, he's coming up from Santa Cruz to do that. And then we also have the Rusty Car Contest again in the parade. So come on down for that. We are going back, we have three stages of music again. So come out, check out the brochure will come out this week in the tribune, so take a look at that and see what it says. One of the other things is we have, as one of our grand marshals, is the Little League All-Stars. They did great this year, so they're gonna be there in the parade. One of the other, the honorary grand marshals are the Pacifica Sports Hall of Fame. They're coming out also. And then, of course, our grand marshal is your very own mayor, our very own mayor is Mary Ann Nyheart. So thank you very much, Mary Ann. And then, one of the other things, I wanted to let you guys know that we do have a lot of businesses in town now that are jumping on the bandwagon. They're coming in as sponsors, and they're helping us out with other things. So we're really reaching out to local business to, you know, to have them help us along. And that's really working out to our benefit. And then on Sunday, the Fog Jog and the Fun Fest for the kids. And one last thing is this year, we do have our signature fog cutter drink is, we have a contributor this year, and it's Sammy Hager's Rum. So come on out and try one. They're supposed to be, they're gonna be good. So thank you again on behalf of the Fog Fest organizing group.
Community groups.
And community groups. We'd like to say thank you to the City of Pacifica once again, and we'll see you guys out there this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you.
[applause] Can I present this to you guys? Sorry about that.
Absolutely.
Oh, that's beautiful.
Yeah. We, this is one of the favorite things because we put them in City Hall.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Who did this?
Do we have the artist on this? You're all wearing it on your shirts, I see.
We have pre-sales.
Yeah. Okay.
The artist this year is Wavon Dean Fernandez.
Okay.
From Manna. So, once again, he's local, and so we try to keep it local as much as possible. And I also like to say a shout-out to the Public Works. Those guys are doing a great job out there, and the Police Department, too.
Yes.
Yes, they do a great job, and the Police Department, too, for keeping us all safe out there.
Well, thank you so much for all you do. I, obviously, 16 years lining up the parade and a few other things. I have some personal experience with that, so I know how hard you all work. I know how hard you all work this weekend, and the community is very grateful for that because it's an all-citizen volunteer organization that pays for itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Phil's our hotels for the weekend, too. Wait, before you sit down, we have lights. Mayor Protam?
Just quickly, I want to repeat what Mayor Nyheart just said, that we really want to thank the Fog Fest Committee. You guys are amazing, and I know the hours and hours of time that you put into this year after year, and it's the one event in our city that really unifies our city and shows people what it's all about, which is our community. And everybody comes together and works so hard, whether on the committee or getting a booth together, whatever they do. And so it just really makes our city shine, and I really want to extend my appreciation to all of you for all that hard work and for stepping up and being part of this very important day for all of us. Thank you.
I don't know if you got a close-up of this, but I want to make sure people see. It's a very nice poster. Excellent, excellent poster.
May I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
Over the years, we've contributed back approximately $700,000 back to the community groups. And last year alone was around $58,000 back to the community groups.
Say that part louder. Say the fir-, you gave, how much, 700?
700.
Eight thousand some odd.
$719,000. And last year was $58,000 back to the community groups.
Wow. Thank you so much.
Couple more lights. Councilmember O'Neal?
Actually, that's what I was just gonna say, is to thank you for all the efforts for the community groups, and the fact, I know my son's Boy Scout troop has been doing the ice for like 25 years there, and it's, there's whole generations that have grown up hauling, boys hauling ice there. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
And Councilmember Degree?
People all around the county talk about coming to the Fog Fest, and thank you for bringing back the sand. And also, I don't like mermaids, but this one is very touching. The only other mermaid I liked was the one that young high school girl did of the beard in the baseball game.
Ah, yeah.
This one is very touching.
It's very sweet. And Councilmember Stone?
I just want to say thank you also, and everything that you guys are doing. Obviously, I'm glad the mayor pointed out how many hours you guys put in, and that it's all community-run and volunteer-run.
All year long.
Yeah, it's not just a one-time, one-weekend thing. I know you're working for months and months, so thank you for everything, and I'm looking forward to a great event, and I was gonna say something about, never mind, I was gonna say something about the weather, I don't want you to, go ahead.
Don't.
That'd be good. We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Linda.
Our Green Team leader, Cindy Abbott, is here as well, and she heads up the Green Team with the high school groups that do that for us, so.
Very good. And Linda, when Fog came into existence, I don't know who's on the board now, so are you one of the last ones? You are?
15th year for myself and Peter Loeb.
Right. Because this group of citizens really stepped up and saved Fog Fest in a lot of ways with their money out of their own pockets. So thank you for being there so long. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to all the new people who put new blood in there, too. Because you get tired.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. And speaking of Fog Fest, I think I saw that one of the sponsors is actually here. We have a special presentation. I actually asked for this for the council from PG&E. PG&E has been mapping and doing work with the pipes, and I have Scott Hart here from PG&E to kind of talk about, and you can introduce your guest, what work you've been doing and how it really impacts our community, and that's where I kind of want the focus to be.
Are you loud and clear? So I'll move through some of the slides a little quickly, then. First of all, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protam, councilmembers, city staff, and public for your time and the opportunity to come and present about PG&E's gas operations. My name is Scott Hart. I'm the local government relations representative to Pacifica for Pacific Gas and Electric Company. My colleague, Mike Cairns, is a supervising gas engineer, and he is my expert on the, in particular, our gas distribution system. So for the questions that I can't answer, which, you know, may be many, but may not be too many, hopefully, I've been brushing up on this quite a bit. And so I'll go ahead and, we'll get going here. I want to make sure to respect everyone's time. So if I may, just a quick overview of our system. PG&E's natural gas system actually entails two different levels of gas pipelines. It's transmission pipelines as well as distribution pipelines. Our gas transmission pipeline's about 6,750 miles of transmission pipelines, these are larger ones, and 42,000 miles of distribution pipelines. So that, from here to Boston, about 15 times. We have more than 3.3 million low-pressure service lines, and that's the quarter-pound pressure that comes into most homes, businesses, most of our customers on the distribution service line level. And then on a daily basis, about 2.6 billion cubic feet of natural gas is delivered to our customers system-wide, and that's from Oregon all the way down to Bakersfield. And so our system, our transmission, natural gas system is based on three elements. We have a backbone system, our gas storage facilities, and our local transmission lines. And so I'm gonna talk a little bit about our local transmission lines, and we'll look at the difference between transmission and distribution in a little bit more detail. Our larger pipes, that's the transmission pipelines, they are at the higher pressure. Anything above 60 pounds pressure then is classified as being at transmission level. And most pipelines between 10 to 42 inches, we have some larger distribution pipelines, but most of the smaller pipes are distribution, most of the larger pipes are transmission. And in fact, in Pacifica, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, we have an eight-inch line that actually is at transmission level, but it's about 90 pounds, and we'll come back to that. So just a little primer there on transmission distribution. Our system in San Mateo County, drilling down here, I'll go quickly. So in San Mateo County, you can see there about 750,000 people. We have 262,918 residential customers, a total of about 277,000, with approximately 2,000 miles of distribution pipeline. 100 miles of transmission, total of about 2,100 miles of gas pipelines in San Mateo County. Whoops, I did the wrong way. There we go. So as we look, the company-wide, we have several key initiatives that we're looking at. First thing we're looking at is pipeline verification. We're validating our records. We've digitized over 3 million documents, and we're, we have a process in place where we, as we get eyes on our pipelines, we validate our records to make sure they're accurate. And also, we use that time, we enhance our records. And then we also have a dynamic system that allows us to enhance our records through our integration, our integrity management system, which I'll go into in a couple minutes. Our infrastructure upgrades, including valve automation, I'll give you some details on that in a little bit, but essentially what we've done is we've gone in, we've looked at our system-wide, and we've prioritized our pipelines to validate, but then also, in some cases, upgrade. And we had a goal of 200 automated valves, of which we are up to about 150 of those have been installed system-wide. An enhanced emergency response, we have had held trainings with the first responders in every municipality in San Mateo County. And in fact, we're on a second round now of recertifying, going back around to them. Over 45 workshops were held in which police and fire were trained on how to integrate with PG&E through, in many ways, the Incident Command System, which is the universal language of emergency response. Data management, once again, 3 million items have been digitized. We work towards a completely digital system, working away from being paper-based. You know, once again, we still have the paper backup, but we also are working towards having that, and our reps in the field have access to a lot of these records, whether they're on the distribution side or on the transmission side. We spent $38 million on a gas control center in San Ramon. This is a state-of-the-art facility. It is the first in the industry right now, in the sense that it is basically devoted completely to monitoring 24/7 our gas system. It rolled out initially with our transmission system, and now we've started integrating elements of our distribution system. It's, if you've ever seen one of those movies of NASA with the launches, it's basically a huge wall of video screens that show our system and how our system is running. It lets us, it gives us indications of any, you know, if any pressure changes. We can also, through, you know, the interaction between the operators in this, in the room, they can drill down to see where every single one of our vehicles are. Over 45 workshops were held in which police and fire were trained on how to integrate with PG&E through, in many ways, the Incident Command System, which is the universal language of emergency response. Data management, once again, 3 million items have been digitized, we work towards a completely digital system, working away from being paper-based. You know, once again, we still have the paper backup, but we also are working towards having that, and our reps in the field have access to a lot of these records, whether they're on the distribution side or on the transmission side. We spent $38 million on a gas control center in San Ramon. This is a state-of-the-art facility. It is the first in the industry right now, in the sense that it is basically devoted completely to monitoring 24/7 our gas system. It rolled out initially with our transmission system, and now we've started integrating elements of our distribution system. It's—if you've ever seen one of those movies of NASA with the launches, it's basically a huge wall of video screens that show our system and how our system is running. It lets us—it gives us indications of any—you know, of any pressure changes. We can also, through, you know, the interaction between the operators in this—in the room, they can drill down to see where every single one of our vehicles are, who—you know, where our gas service representatives are in relation to, say, a recent dig-in. They can—and so all of this is managed, and it's at hand in San Ramon in one place, and it's monitored 24/7. All right, the metrics. So what we've done is—in fact, my apologies, I said 3 million, and it was—we're up to 4 million digitized records. And so what we're doing is, is we're going back, and we're—our goal is to consistently improve. We want to become the leading utility, period. We'll be happy if it's in the United States, but we're—we're—our goal is to be worldwide. So in fact, we're making lots of strides towards that. It is a progression, you know, you don't go from A to Z instantly, you work your way through, and so we are in a constant progression towards improvement. So what we've done is replaced about 107 miles of transmission pipeline, validated 658 miles of transmission pipeline, installed 150 automated valves, as I'd mentioned before, and opened a new gas control center, as I also mentioned. So we'll move on to the next one. All right, so this is, once again, in San Mateo County. We've replaced last year about 1.6 miles of pipeline, this year, we're on schedule to do almost 3 miles of pipeline, mostly on our Line 109, which goes along 280. We've hydro-tested 41.3 miles in San Mateo County alone. There are operators in this country that haven't hydro-tested 41.3 miles in their entire system, and that's just in San Mateo County alone. We've already installed 20 automated valves across San Mateo County. We had planned for four more that should go online by the end of this year. So enhanced—enhancing the safety of our system. We have two programs. The first program I'll go into is what we call our Transmission Integrity Management Program, and this is how we basically—we evaluate and monitor how the pipe lives its life. One of the key things is, is, you know, how a pipe lives, much like how we live, will determine its—you know, the life of the pipe, it'll determine what maintenance, what mitigations need to be put in place in order to make sure that pipe is safe. And so as we look through this, we have inline inspection, direct assessment, strength testing. Now generally, what we do is—in—the industry standard now is to strength test, and this is a hydrotest, hydrostatic test, at installation, and that's been the standard with PG&E since 1971, and actually, we started it with—even before then—but it—and some of—in some of our installations. But in—since then, once it's hydro-tested, that's mainly to test the manufacturing and the installation/construction. Then you monitor it, you monitor the life of the pipe. You do direct assessments, you go back and you evaluate, you do—you—are engineers, use algorithms to determine what would be a good spot to dig down, uncover the pipe, look at it, see if it's got—you know, if the coating is still on it, see if there's any corrosion, see if there's any inter—you know, anything that would let us know that we need to implement any mitigations on this pipeline. And then inline inspection, and this is something that we're working towards. Now, inline inspection requires a minimum size pipe, and this is—so this is the larger pipes. Right now, 24 inches is the smallest pipeline that we are able to inline inspect in our system, and so we're—that's part of the work we're doing on Line 109, just to the east of Pacifica, and to the south. But inline inspection, basically, just kind of—it gives you a detailed analysis of the pipe internally. It's less invasive than a hydrotest where you have to take the line completely out of service, cut it free of the system, put on test heads, and it's—it's the direction that the industry is going for ongoing maintenance, well, ongoing analysis of their pipelines. Whoop, I forgot to go down. There we go. So what we do, we get eyes on our pipelines bimonthly or monthly. Our larger pipelines are—we have helicopters that fly twice a month to make sure that we don't have anybody working close proximity to our pipes, because the biggest threat to our pipes, whether large, small, any size pipe, is a third-party dig-in. This is construction companies, major projects, this is our own—you know, our fellow utilities, things like—that's the biggest threat. And so what we do is, we, you know, are looking to see if there's anything that we're not aware of, and we work closely with all the municipalities to—and Public Works is great, we've had a great relationship with Mr. Ocampo in being able to coordinate our projects back and forth, and so—in Pacifica. But then we also are looking for third-party contractors, things like that. Our leak surveys, we do annual surveys on our transmission pipes, our larger pipelines. We also do—and those are walking, that's actually having somebody walk the whole pipe. We investigate every odor call, doesn't matter, you know, with dead squirrels, smells like it, we help people find it, because it's the source of an odor that they called about. So we—and we encourage, you know, that any time any—a customer has a concern or a question or a doubt, if they smell something, please call PGE 5,000, 800-PGE500. If it's a large odor, we always advise, and if they're concerned, please, you know, call 911 on odors, but we do investigate every single one. We have new technology that we're using, and this is—we've bought six of these—we call it Pecaro—is the technology, it's Santa Clara Company-developed. It's about 1,000 times more sensitive than any of the equipment that's being used in the industry to detect methane gas. In fact, it picks up any—the smallest elements of methane gas, to the point where we have to be very discerning, and we go back and follow up all of—you know, the vehicle, essentially, we follow up with humans with the next level of detection, because it could be something literally as small as a squirrel decaying, decaying vegetation, sewer gas, but we still, once again, this helps us to then narrow down and to isolate any type of readings for methane gas. And then we go and make—and either find out whether it is natural gas or if it's another source. Distribution Integrity Management System. All right, this is on our smaller pipes. The distribution system, what we do is, we go and we—we have a system of replacement. We use an algorithm that essentially does system—looks at our system system-wide, and we prioritize based on how the pipe is living its life. Has it had dig-ins? Has it had leaks reported? Has it—have we identified it as being in an area that was installed—a particular type of pipe that we have seen that has had issues in certain types of soil in relation to certain types of environmental conditions, and so what—we prioritize replacement on that. And once again, third-party dig-in on our—especially in our distribution system is our largest threat. We had over 60 dig-ins in San Mateo County in the first half of the year from—and that's—you know, we ask everyone to please make sure that they call 811 before they dig. About 50% of them are residential, so people who are planting a new tree, putting up a fence, mailbox, and that's just on our system. That's not also—you know, because there's the water system, there's also—there's sewer laterals that they need to be careful of, and so we encourage that everyone call 811 before they put a shovel in the ground, no matter where, even in the back of their home, because some of their services are fed from behind their homes. Now, a little more specifics about Pacifica. As we see here on this map, which the next one kind of blows it up a little bit, so we'll get a little—little closer. All right, this is the—this is the transmission-level pipeline in Pacifica. It's—we're transitioning from calling it a distribution feeder main, because it did create some confusion externally. This is a transmission-level pipeline. It's running at 90 pounds, it is between 4- and 8-inch steel pipe, depending on, you know, where it is, and this runs from our station, our San Pedro Station, over on Skyline, just right in—just inside the border, or actually, just outside of the boundary of San Bruno. It runs down to our regulator station at Oddstad in Terranova, and what happens at that station is, that's where it gets converted to distribution pressure. And so then, that distribution system feeds all of our customers here in Pacifica. Now, this is a one-way-fed system, and so there—it pretty much—it terminates at Oddstad, and then it goes out from there to our customers.
Before you leave that, this is—this was a point of concern for our citizens, I want to make sure we just spend a little—we're now into the Pacifica part of this, so want to spend just a little bit of time. Could you describe how this is different than like the pipe in San Bruno?
First of all, much smaller pipeline. The pipe in San Bruno was 30 inches. It was—so 30-inch pipe was that big. This pipe is anywhere from 4 inches to 8 inches, and then the biggest difference is pressure. The pipe in San Bruno was running between 3, 15, 400 pounds, as—whereas this pipe is running at 90 pounds pressure maximum. It usually is running probably around 7—between the high 70s, low 80s, but the maximum it runs at is 90, much lower. And also, a big important element of that is, this pipeline, when it was installed, all pipeline is installed and it's rated, and then when you run pressure at it, that rate—that pressure is a percentage of what it's rated, and we're running between—less than 10% of what this pipe is rated to be able to handle before it would see any type of—you know, expansion or—
Less than 10%.
Less than 10%. So that, you know, 90% is—that 90 pounds is less than 10% of what this pipe could run at.
So I'm looking at the definitions in here, it's really helped to clarify, because it confused people, the transmission versus distribution.
Sure. Oh, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
And this—I just wanted—
Want to follow up on that?
I just had a quick question in regards to those—the pipes in Pacifica, do they have a lifespan of—
He's going to finish his—
Yeah.
I was just specifically while we were on that pipe, making the difference.
Sure.
I'd prefer to just let him finish, but that was key, because it created such a confusion in town when the pipeline problems happened up in San Bruno. So I'll get back to questions when we get to the end. Go ahead, Scott.
Thank you. And so, yeah, that—the big differences are pressure and size in—between this transmission line in Pacifica and then in San Bruno. And we can look a little bit more details on it. This map shows—these maps show the pressure, the pressure—well, it's in a range, but this one does run at 90 pounds maximum pressure. The installations were between 1965 and in 1974, and that is well within the normal—what—if you were going to say there was a lifespan, and we'll explain—and I'll talk a little bit in a minute about a lifespan and how, you know, that it varies, you know, there's not really a set one.
As long as they're working.
It goes—it actually, it goes back to how the pipe's living its life, very much so. And so this next map here is going to take it down a little more granular. This is looking at our distribution system, and so it's got some of the—if you don't mind, I'm going to go over and I'm going to move the—move it so that we can see—
You wanted the ledger out there, okay.
I just wanted to make sure everybody could see the key on this side there. So the majority, as you can see, there's a lot of blue on the—on the map there. The majority of the system in Pacifica is steel, and we have a little bit of yellow, which is the plastic, and this is what we call a non-Adelaide plastic, and then we have the green segments that are listed as unscheduled, and you see, we have no cast iron, which—we've pretty much eradicated all the cast iron from our system, which kind of puts us in a different place than a lot of—especially like northeastern operators who are still having to address a lot of cast iron. So I'll go back to our definitions here. So the majority is blue, steel, we have some plastic, and then the green. The green is what we call unscheduled Adelaide. Adelaide is a pipe that was—was made by DuPont. It was made from the late—mid to late 60s until the mid 80s. And so there's a period of time in there, what we've seen is that, depending on the type of soil, depending on how the pipe has lived its life, there's an age range in there, between 70—1970 and '72, where the pipe didn't perform as well as it—as we had hoped it would, and so—or—as the industry had hoped it would. And so DuPont put out—you know, basically, they had done the research, and they, you know, notified all the operators and let us know, and so the operators have put in a plan to kind of address Adelaide in those two years. PG&E is putting in a plan to address all Adelaide, all pipe that is made—that was made by DuPont. What we've—you know, our goal is to eventually work through replacement with a focus on, first of all, looking at Adelaide that has shown a propensity for not living the way we want it to live. So what does that mean? That means that it's shown some leaks, and so if it's—if it—if a particular segment —and we—all our jobs are kind of—they're coded by when it was put in place, and the construction—the company that put it in, the crew, all of that, and so what we're able to do is to kind of look at segments of our system. And we look at the segments, and we're able to say, okay, this segment here isn't performing too well. It's showing leaks, but then also, if it's been compromised in other ways, if it's been dug into a couple times, if it's—which, you know, can can create other stresses on the pipe, but it still comes down to, is it—what's the vintage? How has it lived? Is it showing leaks? We have some Adelaide that's—that hasn't had leaks, or minimal leaks. It's a lot to do with the soil, and the soil—rocky soil tends to have what we call rock impingement, and so what it does is, it—it can basically kind of cause a little cracking in the pipe, if the pipe is—if it's not compact, if it's—you know, if it's having any motion or movement. And so that's what—you know, that's what has kind of— and we look at that. So we look at where is it, how is it living its life, what is it telling us? If it's telling us it's having multiple leaks, then what it does is, it—it gets moved up into—the higher—higher ranking for replacement. Now, the fact that this is unscheduled tells us that it hasn't shown those characteristics that would concern us to put it into having it scheduled, and we schedule out about a year and a half to two years. So right now, we have a pretty good idea of what's going to—we're going to replace in 2015, and we're starting to look at 2016. Is that about—
That's true.
Okay. Eventually, I'll let him talk, I promise.
Well, because we have some of that pipe, I want it—that's what was my particular interest, and it's—it's more in Sharp Park and Manor, the older parts of town, but also in Pedro Point. Is it going to be scheduled?
So the bulk of it's actually beyond the year of 1971, 1972. There's actually about only 100 to 400 feet worth of the sections—
Can you get closer?
Oh, absolutely, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Apologize. So there's actually only about 100 to 400 feet worth of the pipe that was built in 1971, which is kind of the year we're most cautious about. Beyond that, the rest of it was built in 1970s later, '73, '74, '79. That specific segment, I'll have to see where it is within there, but it's certainly currently not scheduled for replacement in 2014, '15, or '16, to my knowledge. However, it is based on performance, and if performance changes between now and the next year, it will come back up in another cycle, and we'll reevaluate that and say, you know, the performance has changed, we need to either escalate that or bring a project in to take care of it in the next three to five years.
All right. And just a quick question, that's monitored by the gas control center you were talking about, or what—is the mechanism to monitor these pipes?
So these pipes are typically surveyed by leak survey, so we'd have leak surveyors that go out there, monitor for leaks. Obviously, if a customer called and smelled odor, we would go out there directly and find a leak there, if there was a leak there. What that then does is, it goes back to our Distribution Integrity Management Team. There's a group of people, they're building kind of a database with an algorithm behind it that ranks and risks the threats with specific pieces of pipe. Much like what Scott said, you know, kind of—it's really about, how did that pipe live its life, and how is it performing today? Because as we know, you know, if it was installed poorly in the beginning, or if there's rock impingement over time, we'll start to see that through the performance of the pipe, and that's where the Distribution Integrity Management Team comes in and builds a really quality algorithm to say, let's bring this one to the top of the list, or this one's stable, and we'll monitor it closely.
Great.
I want to go ahead and finish, and then I've got more lights.
And if I may, on that, so we do regular surveys, and then also, it's one of those things, too, our pipeline—distribution pipeline in particular, replacement, is very intrusive to the homeowners and customers, and so, I mean, it's one of those things where, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, the system's safe, we want to—we—when we inconvenience, we want to make sure that we're doing it, because it's—you know, time—it's—you know, we have to paint our houses, we have to, you know, mow our lawns, we have to do all those things in maintenance, and part of maintenance is pipeline replacement, and so we put a lot of thought into that and make sure that we're doing it, obviously, first for safety, but then also, you know, to make sure that it's not—you know, we're not unnecessarily inconveniencing customers.
Sure.
And this is the other segment, just another blow-up of the southern segment there, that shows little pockets. What—essentially, what has happened here, we don't see— What, essentially, what has happened here, we don't see large jobs of, of it, and that's their, you know, at that, in that time period. This kind of also gives you an indication of kind of when did Pacifica grow? And so, in the-
Yeah.
And so, all right. For more information, I will wrap up quickly, and thank you for your patience and your time. Customer care specialists, we have them on call, and please, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, call We also, there's plenty, lots of online information at the address there, pge.com/gassystem. There's even a little place where you can put in your address, and it'll show you the nearest transmission lines, so the larger pipes in that. So, and there's a lot of information there also about the work we do. And then finally, C.R. Progress, this is a compilation of the work that we've been doing, not only across our system, but then it's also in the Bay Area. Finally, thank you so much for your time, and please, call before you dig.
I'm going to open this up for council to ask questions, but I just want to say, this has improved so much. I've gone through this with, with Scott and other experts from PG&E and, what, we had a vice president or two that we skewered pretty good. CK, sorry, but the City and County Association of Governments has been following this pretty much since the beginning, and it's been sometimes brutal for you to, so I'm very impressed with the detail of the information that you're now able to provide, and I would appreciate the council feeling free to ask questions. Councilmember O'Neill.
This is just kind of, you know, you said that people putting in a mailbox sometimes puncher pipe. How deep are the pipes that, you know, a guy putting in, two feet into the mailbox would puncher it?
Well, that's just it, is that we can't guarantee the depth of when service lines are run, mainly because there's grading changes, there's, you know, pipe, believe it or not, actually, pipes mitigate through the soil over time, they can, depending on, once again, how the pipe lives its life. And I'll let Mike expand on that a little bit, too.
Yeah, absolutely. So, typically, new mains are installed at about three feet deep. Services, obviously, as they need to run towards the house, become a little bit more shallow at 24 to 18 inches. But as Scott alluded to, you know, soil conditions change commonly, you know, you might purchase a house and somebody's actually done some landscaping, and that, that could very well have changed the grade. So, the original installation is oftentimes not the best indicator of how deep it currently is. So, we do at times come across cases where we're replacing services, they're quite shallow, four inches they could be, but typically, brand-new installation for a main, three feet, services, 24 to 18 inches.
Okay. And then, the part that's a turnover and an odd stat, now, that, is that all underground, that whole process of depressurizing the, the gas?
Yes, sir. Yes, it is. Our regulator station, I'm just going back to the map here, so, that regulator station is under, it is underground, it's under the surface. We have some valves that are under manholes that we can access, and so periodically, when we've, you know, gone into, we go in and do, we grease the valves, essentially, we'll, we'll, you know, basically run them through a system of, of checks and grease them on a regular basis, and so we'll put up traffic control and, and do that. If we need to valve for, you know, to, to adjust the pressure, things like that, we'll, we do that on both ends. But that one, pretty much, from there, then it goes into the distribution, it goes into the smaller pipes out, outward.
So, there's like no storage of gas there? It just puts a brake on the, the gas going through the pipes, basically?
Yeah, it's basically just a regulator that's there, there's a regulator to monitor to protect it from overpressure events. It just pushes gas straight through, it just reduces the pressure down to a pressure that's distribution pressure.
And has there been any of those that have ever, you know, blown up, I guess, is the answer?
Not to my knowledge, actually, but actually, part of our design philosophy is that we have valves on both sides of them, an inlet valve and an outlet fire valve. We call them fire valves. We designed them, we've never had a case of this, but we designed them in case there ever were as a fire in one of those. You could quickly shut them off within, you know, 20 feet of each side.
And then, kind of, is there a coordination system for when a street gets paved? Because I know, nothing ticks people off, and, you know, you pave a street, then PG&E comes, AT&amp;T comes, Comcast comes, and all of a sudden, it's no better than it was before.
Well, I'll be honest with you, it's, it's so much easier to come in and, and replace under a brand-new street. But I'm not, just joking. No, I, trust me, Councilmember O'Neill, I have heard this from every single one of my cities, and it's something that we are working very diligently to work closely with Public Works, to get their, their plans for street repaving, resurfacing, to, you know, once, like Mike mentioned, we're, right now, we're about a year to a year and a half out, we're working towards trying to extend that a little bit, so that, because in many cases, moratoriums in some of our cities, or, you know, the fact is, you're right, I mean, nobody, even, even three years after a new street, a new paving or a new surfacing is too short for some, you know, for many people, for all of us, and even including myself. I just got a new street out in front of my, my house, and I'm waiting for the next, hopefully it won't be my own company that, that tears it up. It'll probably be SFPUC, I'm hoping.
So, there's really no way you see them being able to schedule stuff? Because like with a sewer lateral ordinance, you know, all of a sudden, you could see those patches in the street coming too?
Well, and that's, that's something we do hope to, to be able to coordinate moving forward. Once again, it's, we're, we're in open communication right now with, with all of the cities in San Mateo County. My colleague, Kathy Levezo, who is the account manager to all the cities, and I are doing our, you know, we're trying to establish that. It's something that, you know, is, is a goal of ours, to be better coordinated. In fact, one of the things that she and I are working on, you know, hopefully in the next six months to a year, is having with all 20 of the cities in the county, a regular coordinating meeting, you know, which we're, you know, we'll sit down, we do it kind of, right now, we do it on an annual basis. In fact, it's one of Mike's colleagues that, you know, well, I say chase down, but, you know, asks for the, the paving plans from all of the cities. As far as the, the projects, that's one of the things too, is we, we're working to, when cities are thinking about what they're going to do, street pave, repaving, a streetscape, obviously, we've known about Palmetto for a long time, but if there are other streetscaping projects, other sewer-type things, that's something we want to do, to try to coordinate on. And in fact, we ask that if, if that is known, you know, and we share that with our service planning, we have, we're, we have a delineation process that we are const, you know, we're, we're trying to improve and make better. In fact, Mike is one of the leads on our, on our delineation process, where when we get a project from, from the cities, we then, it goes, and it's evaluated through the different departments, in particular, the gas distribution, because that tends to be the one that's in the streets the most. But then also, where there's underground electric, we try to coordinate with that as well. Now, I think you're talking is, is trying to coordinate with other utilities like sewer and AT&amp;T, and, you know, my goal, personal goal, as, as the rep in this area, is to be able to get to that. It has been a challenge just to do it on a project basis, because it is, in some ways, kind of herding cats, and not all of the other utilities have a ME. They, in many ways, you know, the version of ME covers all the Bay Area counties, and so it's, it's a little bit more, but I'm working to, to try to do that. If nothing else, though, between us and the city, we should be able to, to eliminate some of the, you know, we're coming right behind you, and, you know, coordinate. If nothing else, not also, you know, making sure that we're not getting in the way of your project, because we are coming in, you know, and trying to do two things in the same space.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilmember, oh, Councilmember DeGree.
I think I have two questions. One is looking at page 18 and page 19, and et cetera. Are the color codes between 18 and 19 the same, or we look at them newly? I mean, like, for example, is 1940's yellow related to the yellow on page 19?
Yes, it is. It's, yeah, I'm sorry that it didn't get carried over, it just got blown up. So, yes, the same, the same from this, from 19 carries over. So, the yellow on 20 and 21 is plastic, the blue is, is steel, and the green is unscheduled Adelaide.
Okay, so, along that then, if I forget about 18 a little bit, and look at 19, so, I think what I'm doing is prioritizing, and I don't know if I'm doing that in the right way, like, which one is like a greater concern? If I see yellow, do I think, uh-oh? And not so, uh-oh, on green? Or do I get more excited about the, oh, my goodness, the red ones?
All right, well, the yellow is plastic that's performing very well, the green is, is plastic that we're watching and monitoring. And so, it's, it's not, uh-oh, it's more, oh, okay, I'm going to keep an eye on you.
Just want to make sure. I'm kind of into the traffic lights, you know?
Understood, yes. And just, yeah, the, the color coding here, this is, on page 18, is related to those specific maps on the trans, on that pipeline, that larger, you know, four-inch to eight-inch pipe that's at transmission level.
Thank you.
Certainly. Thanks for the question.
Oh, Tim.
Quick question, just regarding future recommendations. When we have an earthquake, is the recommendation still that people should turn off their gas? Or what should they do if there's an earthquake and if they smell gas, in addition to calling PG&E?
Yes. If you're in doubt, call. If it's safe for you to turn off your gas, do so, and then we'll make sure we have somebody, we do, we have service representatives who can come out and relight for you. Now, it's, but it's one of those things where, once again, first of all, be safe, and then we ask, you know, please use common sense. If, if the odor is an odor, but if, it's one thing, but if you're, if it's really, really super strong, and, you know, we want people to be, you know, to do what they need to, to be safe.
Great. Good advice.
The only thing I would add just about earthquakes is that we do have six shutdown zones in Pacifica, so, those are specifically designed valves that can shut off the system in case of catastrophic emergencies, earthquakes, that kind of thing. So, we do have those in place, those valves are annually maintained, so, they are specifically designed if there was something really large that, you know, you can't expect every single person in Pacifica to go out and shut off their own personal gas. We have that ability, and really typically, quick time to shut down the entire system.
Great. Good to know. Thank you.
And we were able to do so in, up in Napa, you know, last month, with, in very similar situation.
So, Mr. Scott, did you have anything? No lights from, so, I appreciate you coming. I, I want to underscore for council that this is so much better than what we got initially, and I'm underscoring that for you. I recognize how much you put into this, but, you know, it's our citizens, and we need to know, and having that kind of confusion that happened in the back of Oddstead really didn't sit very well, but-
Well, thank you-
You know that.
And thank you for the opportunity, you know, every opportunity that we have to be able to communicate and, and also, you know, win back the trust of our customers.
Absolutely.
Sorry. I just wanted to thank you guys for coming out, I appreciate it, and just to note that, this is just like a lot of other things that we've recently talked about, it's just something we have to keep talking about. I know right after the, the explosion in San Bruno, PG&E was nice enough to come out to Pacifica. I think that was maybe, gosh, just maybe six months after, eight months after, and go over this line, and we had a meeting in the, I think it was Ortega School, and, and it was really helpful, but it's something I think that people hear about or think about, something's in the news, and, so it's just something we have to constantly talk about, and this is, this is one good forum, but also, feel free to, to reach out into our other mediums that we have as well. It's important. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you.
I don't know that all this information was initially available when you started presenting in CKAG. Was it?
It's grown.
In this detail? It's grown a lot.
Correct. Yes, it has.
Yeah. And I think that's part of what has clarified things for all of us. So, thank you, and thanks for keeping those lines of communication open.
My pleasure. Thanks.
All right. See you again soon. I guess you're on CKAG.
Yes.
So, that brings us to council communications. This is an opportunity for council members to share with each other. Okay, Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mayor Nyheart. Just wanted to report on a couple things. So, first, we had our joint articulation meeting last week with Councilmember O'Neill and myself representing the city, and great discussion, and, and that's, that group is, works well together, so it's, it's been very beneficial. Last thing that we were talking about was the sharing services, and I know we've talked about it in the past, but hopefully that has some potential, and, you know, we're all doing similar things, so if we can, if we can share those services, we can really leverage our limited resources that we have. So, just the next step is the general managers, various general managers, city managers will be getting together and talking about that more, so, in your various meetings, if you want to talk with Lori about that, but just kind of at the beginning stages, but it is, excuse me, is exciting, because it has potential. So, maybe Councilmember O'Neill would like to add something, but definitely something to talk with the city manager about a little bit more, and hopefully we'll be reporting more to the public if, if stuff goes further. Also wanted to mention the Skyline Success Summit this weekend, or this Friday, and I see Cindy Abbott here, I know she's one of the committee members, maybe she'll be talking about that, but it's this Friday. It was funny, I was just talking with the member of the public, and they said, wouldn't it be great if we had people from business and government and all these other things that got together and talked about issues? And I said, hey, there's something this Friday. So, this is just the second year, but it is, it was very beneficial last year, and I encourage everyone to attend if they're interested in kind of the North County happenings, it's really, really interesting. What else is there? Just wanted to wish everyone a happy Fog Fest, happy and safe Fog Fest, and hopefully, hopefully everyone has a great time, and I know I have some new friends into town, we'd be going, and looking to have a, have a happy and safe, 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 safe Fog Fest. And then I just wanted to mention too, to the council and to Mayor Nyheart, thank you for the council cities that you're putting on this weekend, or this Friday. Every month that the city of, or the cities in San Mateo County get together, and Pacifica's hosting at Porto 27, so, and our topic, it has to do with mental health and the mental health initiative that Mayor Nyheart is, is very much a part of in the county. And it's, it's great that we're doing this here in Pacifica, and I thank you for your efforts in that, I really appreciate it, and I, I do feel a lot of momentum that's going on in the county in regards to mental health services, so, that's, that's really a positive thing, and hopefully we'll see more and more come out of that. But these conversations and dialogues are where it happens, so, thank you for your efforts. And that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Neill.
I just kind of wanted to repeat what Councilmember Stone said about the high school, school district, water district meeting. I think it's really kind of nice, we brought in and added, the water district just kind of started coming maybe two or three meetings ago, and it's added a different dynamic, like the school district approached about a way for them to start to recycle more water that's running off the hills or something like that. So, there was actually that, and then the shared services thing was a big piece about how we want to proceed and maybe looking at some stuff to share. I also, with Mary, with Mayor Nyheart, up at Harmony 1, groundbreaking, the views up there are absolutely gorgeous, and a lot of dirt moved. Okay, that's it.
Councilmember DeGree.
Yes, there was a memorial for former Mayor Jim Vreeland. I want to thank Mayor and Surf Rider Club and Jim's, and all the community, and especially Jim's wife, Lori, for approaching us. It was nice to be able to be with the family to commemorate all that former Mayor Vreeland did for this city, especially Lindemar Beach, and there's still things we'll know about. For example, the park that is supposed to actually come into being at the foot of Manor, that was a very impressive paddle out, which was very, I appreciate being able to do that with the community. Attended an OES meeting, a county's quarterly meeting, and the planning committee there that looks over all of our hazardous possibility problems, they would like to add a battalion chief, fire battalion chief, I was surprised that there wasn't one already, but I did look at the, there really wasn't a job description, so I did ask for a more specific job description for that. This will be, be coming before, I believe it was before the managers, the day after, and it will be coming back to every city council to discuss and vote upon. We haven't been having very meeting, council meetings, so I was looking at the things we talked about agendizing before, such as the scouts, a few cities actually have scouts open the meetings, and also, we have in our city- have scouts open the meetings, and also we have in our city, um, criteria to earn Eagle Scout badges, and I understand the girls have a badge as well, and they're always asking for us to commemorate them in some manner, if perhaps we could consolidate it at a certain date, commemorate all of them at once in a public fashion. I attended the Pacifica Collaborative, and the youth issues came up again, there's always been a dream in town to have a youth hangout, and, um, part of the collaborative monies deal with alcohol and tobacco, and we also talked about drug culture, and that the young people really want to avoid all of this, and how do we go about helping them to avoid some kind of entrenched cultures that happen in, in every city, including ours. Weed abatement with the fire and the drought, we don't really have an ordinance, so I'd like to just have a discussion on that. And code enforcement in general, I know I'm a constant pain in the neck about signs that are up all around town, I see more of them in the north end because I'm in the north end more, but that's nonprofit signs, for-profit signs, candidate signs, and you name it, signs, yard sales, whatever. And either we need to enforce them or put a, a blanket waiver if we can't afford to have code enforcement, 'cause there's a couple new businesses in the golf course area that we're told that they really shouldn't put up their signs, and they've been obedient ever since. And there are others that don't abide by the, the ordinance at all. And, uh, there are long-time businesses that do not put their signs up in illegal places, so it really bothers me that we're kind of saying to the law abiders, "Hey, forget about it, just put your sign up there with the others." Or we're saying, "Ignoring is okay, what difference does it make?" Well, I'm saying, actually, I really believe, and I hear from business people as well, that it isn't fair, and we really should be doing something about it, so I think maybe we need to, if we can't do something about it without being on an agenda, I really think we should agendize it. I did forget to ma- mention, I did, did I mention the Coma Creek meeting? Okay. That's a quarterly meeting, and it's a group of cities that get together wherever the Coma Creek is, and we do have a little s- piece of it in Pacifica, they're always very fascinating meetings, and it always highlights to me the very value of creeks, and we have several, but, um, in this one, they're also concerned about sea level rising, so, but it's moving along well, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Just like to also start with my deepest condolences to the Freeland family. Jim served this city for fifteen years, and, and then some, I'm sure, and it was a beautiful ceremony, and I was, uh, honored to be there, and just very saddened, um, that this happened, so, um, was glad to be able to be part of that. I also attended a legislative committee meeting with Mayor Nyheart, and at this committee, we primarily talk about issues that most directly affect San Mateo County. There's been over nine hundred bills that were introduced to the governor since August fifteenth, and by September thirtieth, he has to sign off either veto or accept those bills, so what we do in this committee is kind of pick the ones that are most, um, that, that affect us the most, and some of the, most of those really have a lot to do with sustainability. We talked a lot about the water bond that's gonna be on the November, um, ballot, and we also talked about several bills that might influence us more in the future, for instance, they're thinking about changing the, the vehicle gas tax to more of vehicle miles traveled, so we've talked about the implications of making such a move and how that would take place. They talked about things like hot lanes, which are, uh, high occupancy lanes that people typically use for, uh, carpooling, then they're gonna start charging people potentially if it would pass according to how many ki- how many people are in the car when you're using those lanes, and these are ways to garner funds to do city infrastructure improvements, because one of the difficulties is that as people are driving more fuel-efficient cars, they're garnering less funds to take care of the streets, so, you know, one good thing leads to other implications. So, it's just very interesting, and we try to represent the city when we're, um, on that committee. Let's see, and I also attended a San Mateo Association of Realtors meeting where they got together many different, uh, city council members to try to talk about issues that we all had in common and that we were facing, and what kind of, uh, solutions people had, so I thought that was very informative as well, and I'm very much looking forward to the Fog Fest and the Council of Cities this Friday, and I'll turn it over to Mayor Nyheart.
Thank you. Okay, several things, um, thank you, uh, everyone for, uh, coming to the memorial, it was actually put on, uh, organized kind of quickly, uh, at the family's request, and, I worked very closely with Greg Cochran, and it was the Surf Club, um, so it was beautiful, it was very meaningful, and, um, there's a lot going on in relationship to our former council member and colleague and former mayor. ABAG, for example, closed the meeting in his honor, I know C-KAG is doing the same, ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments, and C-KAG, the Association, uh, or the council, City and County Association of Governments. So, just so you know, I know that Lori is incredibly appreciative, and today, Congresswoman Spears' office asked also for the numbers and stuff to be able to respond, so, uh, pretty much everyone, um, there is a fund set up for the boys, and, um, that's how we've continued to honor him and everything that he's done, and I will be closing the meeting in his honor. The Association of Bay Area Governments, we've been presenting, and we had a executive board meeting this past week, and, um, we're gonna need to be moving forward fairly soon with the, um, priority conservation area and the designation for the headlands, um, but the, and for the site for the trail, but the, um, most significant thing was we've been presenting the priority development areas each mu- each time we get together, and the improvements in Petaluma's downtown were really striking from where it used to be to where it is, in a town not that much bigger at the time than us, and I, I think it's a real model worth looking at. So, I would encourage council members to look at the presentations that are on the Association of Bay Area Governments website, uh, they're very useful for a number of ideas. Speaking of the associations, our, our last meeting for, um, uh, City and County Association of Governments, we just approved a stormwater and, uh, rain barrel incentive program, so, we will be rolling that out to the communities in which, uh, you can get a rebate of fifty dollars per barrel, uh, you know, on getting, um, uh, rain barrels and recycling and reusing, and that's something that we have decided to use funds for, from the City and County Association of Governments to be able to do that. You have to provide receipts, of course, uh, photos that they're actually installed, but we will also help with installing, and there's, uh, mechanisms that make sure when they're installed correctly that there will be no mosquitoes and that sort of thing, just because the rain barrels are there, so I would really encourage people to look into that program, um, which we should be rolling out. I would guess all the details are done in the next week or two, um, because we did approve it. I, as long as we're talking about water, um, often I get letters from the, the Conference of Mayors, and, and whoever's up here next will be getting those letters, and, and you get them and you kinda think they don't have, they're like geared for cities. Only this last time, there's a program that actually is talking about drought and education around drought and water savings, and I thought it was a very good educational program, what I looked at, and if I sign on, it's all free to us in the community, so I will be going to the Water District and asking about that, because I figured, and I'm looking at Josh in the audience just 'cause you represent the board here, but, um, I'm thinking that you might find this useful, and it's, it's sponsored by the Conference of Mayors, so it's free to us, so I think we can make use of it in our community right now. I also, uh, wanted to say that, thank you for talking about the Council of Cities on Friday night that we're hosting. I really want to thank Chief Tassa, who's gonna be presenting on the panel with me, he's really stepped up in a way that, I know we're gonna be doing your retirement soon, and I'm, I'm kinda sad, I'm, no, I'm heartbroken about that, and, but I know you get to retire, and everybody does, but, uh, he's presenting, um, with the panel and really talking about the relationships of cities and communities with county services and how that works, and so we're hoping to generate much larger discussion in, across the county about exactly some of the things that, that we've experienced, and we also have Steve Kaplan, who's the head of, um, behavioral health, coming to that, so I'm really quite thrilled, and I hope all of you can attend. I do wanna encourage people to, uh, take part in the Mayor's Pride Awards for beautification. We had some entries come in, we've got some others that are being talked about, we're generating discussion, but we're really trying to help improve curb appeal in the community. And on that note, uh, not only did we do the groundbreaking, uh, up on Fasler, but before that, I presented, um, for, I represented the City and County Association of Governments for the, um, opening sort of, of the project for the new interchange on Broadway and Highway One, and in that, I, I was able to talk to the district chair of, uh, Caltrans and get some, um, certainty nailed down about support for cleaning up trash on the highway, so I, I'm really gonna move forward on that, and I don't see Lynn, and thank her for her wonderful coastal cleanup, but, uh, Lynn Adams, um, I'll be reaching out to her, and I think we can make this happen, so I know Cindy will convey it, but she probably knows what I'm talking about. I do wanna say that I received a really great letter, uh, that has to do with a producer-director that is doing, um, a public television, uh, documentary on, uh, let's see, what is it called, California Number One Highway, and what they're doing is the Highway One, and they're doing a, um, documentary, HDTV, uh, for PBS that will cover special sites all along the highway and Highway One, and I've reached out to the Historical Society to help me prepare the letter, 'cause they're asking mayors to sort of nominate sites, and obviously I wanna do that so that Pacifica's included, and so I'll be working with, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and, and some of our community members and put that together before the thirty-first of October. Filming will be next year, we'll get to know in advance if any of our sites were selected, so we're very excited about that. And, sorry I had so much tonight, but I did wanna say, you know, um, I am presenting to the Boy Scouts on the twenty-ninth so they can get their badge, they ask a series of questions of the mayor, I think, uh, mayor, when Councilmember Stone was mayor, he did the same thing, and, um, we get asked to do the Eagle Stout presentations and, and a number of those sorts of things, so it's really great. But I would, I would encourage any of you, you know, we have a, quite a limited staff, and every single project that I've talked about, that I've added on, we've done ourselves, so I really encourage you that if you have ideas, you can organize the meetings, you can do those kinds of things, work with, with Lori and make sure you're within the bounds, but we have to step up and, and do the pieces of that, so, um, it's much more important than just scheduling a meeting, it's actually bringing the task forward. Which brings me to the sign issue, um, I was actually gonna bring that up tonight, uh, because we have a sign ordinance, and I have received several complaints, and I'd just like to have as part of, if it's okay with the city attorney, to review that just a little bit of what we're doing, because, um, the political campaigns on public property, campaign signs, and campaign signs showing up unfortunately on people's property that they have not given permission to put it on their property is really aggravating some of our citizens, so, um, Pete Pereira's property, it, the old Pete Pere- he's now gone, but his daughter's running, and she's been very clear that it's only for, um, nonprofit kinds of groups that have an activity, so, I, I'd like to just review our sign ordinance, could you briefly recap that, one of you, of what we're doing about it?
Good evening, Lori Tenfo, City Manager. Staff has discussed this among ourselves and have reviewed the, uh, ordinance on this matter. It says that, uh, signs are not permitted on the public right-of-way, um, however, we are required to give notice to the sign owner before removing it, uh, I believe it's five days' notice is what the ordinance specifies, and then we can remove it and store it, um, and then give the owner a chance to come and claim it. For the signs that show up on the private property, then we have less influence over that, I mean, certainly the property owner can take their own actions to remove those signs and do whatever they wish with them, presumably, but it's not really the city's purview to do anything related to the private property. Does that help?
Yes, that's exactly what I wanted, and, and we have had complaints, so we will be following through, um, but I'd really encourage those people involved in the campaign right now to get your signs off of public property, and the right-of-way is considered public property.
Could I add one more thing before you move on to a different topic, and that is, I've, I've alerted the council, but maybe this is a good time to also share with the community about our code enforcement resources. Council is aware that we have been trying to recruit for someone to fill that position, most recently we went through the entire process, ended up with someone, but then, they did not accept the job, and so we are back to sort of square one, there was no second candidate. We have contracted with a private firm to provide those services for us in the interim, however, the budget only covers, uh, sixteen hours a week worth of time, so in essence, we will only have code enforcement available for two days a week, so that's a far cry from forty hours, which is our normal. So, I just wanted to, to remind you all and to let the community know that we're doing the very best we can with, as you said, very limited resources.
That's great, thank you very much. I do know that at least two of the property owners that I know about have pretty much taken it into their own hands, um, but, you know, it's just respect. Okay. Anything else from council? Moving on to oral communications, uh, I wanna remind the public that the portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that's not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications, provided however, that during oral communications portion of this agenda, only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any individual member therein. Uh, council members should not enter into debate with the speakers under oral communication, a maximum time of three minutes, and for those of you, I know we have some new speakers, there are lights on the podium, um, when the yellow light comes on, it's caution, it doesn't mean you have to stop, it's just caution. When the red light comes on, I have to cut you off, because it's three minutes for everybody. The maximum time of three minutes, it's pursuant to the municipal code, and, um, the wording in this particular statement comes straight out of Title Two, Chapter One, Section Two dash one point one-one-eight. Any person making impertinent slanderous or profane remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the council, shall be called to order by the presiding officer, and if such conduct continues, may at the direction of the presiding officer be ordered barred from further audience before the council during that meeting. With that, we have, uh, a number of cards for oral communications, actually I only have four. They are Therese Dyer, followed by Roger Medler, followed by Cindy Abbott. Therese? Dyer? No, followed by Roger Medler, and then Cindy Abbott.
Good evening, City Council and staff. I enjoyed the orientation at the police department the other night, however, it's just general information. I don't know if this is the same information you gave, give a new candidate when they come in, but if it is, I'd like to add the following, um, that I think you need to include a copy of the California Constitution, a copy of Proposition Two-Nineteen, the GAN appropriations, uh, the current development that are going on, a copy of the Brown Act, and I'd like to see, uh, the list of property that's now being developed. And, I, and then there's another one that was passed by Governor Brown in two thousand twelve, where, uh, Senate Bill eleven-eighty-six, which adds a state fee of a dollar on any applicant for a local business license or renewal, so I think that needs to go along with the fees. And then, uh, the other thing is- other thing is, I'm not too happy with the budget there. I mean, it's the one that we haven't really done a forensic audit on it, and I'd like to see that. I'd like to see the disbursements in a more transparent way because they're very difficult even for the employees to read. And as far as the property on the coal property that we're attempting to, or we are, I guess, going to buy for $585,000, I'd like to know more about the $366,000 from the Trana family. Is that the same $300,000 that Steve Rhodes paid for a piece of property that connected to, or was adjacent to, the coal property, or is this something else? And the Pacifica Land Trust and the E-Rat funds, I'm really against using any of our education funds for any additional parks. San Mateo County has 25 lawyers. They have a lot of money. It's a county park, and I think they should step up to the plate. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger Medler, Cindy Abbott, and then Julie Lancel. And that's all the cards I have.
Yeah, hi. Anyway, I was thinking when filmmakers come, they can take a picture of all the garbage and, you know, and the signs. And then, they can drive by that 850 Palmetto that I complained about, I think, a few months ago. The guy's got a motorhome up on Jackson. He's tearing it out with a torch and a beater. And he's got, I think, during the week, they store trailers. They pull the trailers in there, about two trailers, and I think a tractor. They've got some forms in there. Are they using it totally as a, to disable parts and storage? Well, it's meant for fishermen and the surfers. So, I mean, can't we do something about that? I talked to the officer, and he said, "Oh, can't do nothing about that." I go, "Oh, that's normal." So, when I say this liberty and justice for all, I don't want you to forget about Earl Chang. And there's a lady that got shot in Yanara, Serrano, Garcia. They have a website. I hope you all, people in the, will check that out. I guess the man would like to have some support. He'll have marches and stuff. And we went down there for a little get-together. And I don't understand this ordinance 2-1118. Could you send me a copy? I went to see Kathy today, and it doesn't say anything about not being able to talk to anybody direct. So, I'd like to get that ordinance. And I think it's in violation of my civil rights. If I, you know, maybe it's me. I don't know. Maybe I don't understand. I think you can say whatever you want to. I call it, my attorney said, "Call it freedom of speech," anyway. So, I went, in the Chamber of Directory, let's see, Commerce, it says in the little book there on page 287, and it says, "Permits are required to be, for the Chamber of Commerce, auto-related services with conditions permitted was within the zone inner district." Is that, am I done? No? One more. Okay. And it says, anyway, I'd like to have, you maybe should tell the President of the Chamber of Commerce about that again. And I understand, Lori Tenfo, you get $12,000 a year for, I mean, I can't talk directly to her. I got to practice that. I understand, City Council, that Lori Tenfo gets $12,000 for relocation. I don't know if the city knows that. Anyway, I got, oh, I went to the water treatment meeting. Hey, those people are pretty good. And I really like them people. I mean, I really had a good time. We had milk and, I think, biscuits or doughnuts or something, whatever they were. They're great people to talk, go to. So, anyway, you know that John Garcia, Garcia, he was going to improve Palmetto like 40 years ago? What happened to him?
Thank you, Roger.
Oh, anyway. Bye.
I do, but not for oral communications.
Probably for three.
Okay. Oh, one more. I got it. You got in the wrong pile, Anita. Okay. Cindy Abbott, Julie Lancel, and then Anita Reese.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members and public. And thank you to Councilmember Lenstone for shouting out about this Friday's Success Summit at Skyline College. This is our second year of hosting the Success Summit, and it is just that type of opportunity where community members, businesses, civic leaders, and nonprofit organizations all come together to talk about issues different from other forums in the county. It's all about North County and what can we do to improve life here. And we pick a couple of topics each year. And something that's very different is that we actually follow up over the course of the year with an initiative that we bring together. So, we will be updating on last year's initiative that we voted on to move forward, which was a transportation initiative. And we've made progress up at Skyline, talking about how to get people to Skyline College. And I think that some of the lessons that we can learn from there will ultimately maybe be things that we can do in Pacifica because it's very similar, where people are trying to cross from the east to the west and to get to places that are a little bit off of the beaten track of the BART stations, and certainly not where the El Camino Corridor is, where so much funding is going. So, we look forward to updating the public about that initiative, as well as talking about two key topics this year, which is how can we collectively work together to overcome the socioeconomic divide, and also hidden gems and hidden opportunities, where we're going to talk about things in North County. And I'm pleased to say that a number of events that are going to be highlighted in a package that will be handed out that was put together by the San Mateo County Silicon Valley Convention and Visitors Bureau do highlight places here in Pacifica. Everything from the Adobe to the Sanchez Art Center and our wonderful beaches and parks, including GGR NRA and other city facilities as well. So, I do invite everybody. It is the Skyline Success Summit. In addition to those two panels, we are also having a City Manager Roundtable. And I'm very pleased that our new City Manager, Lori Tenfo, will also be there and presenting innovative things that are taking place here in Pacifica. So, I look forward to seeing people this Friday up at Skyline College from 8 until 12:30. Thank you.
Julie Lancel, and Anita Reese. And then, I've been given a note about a card for Mike Lawson, so I'll take you from this card. But I don't have, Mickey, Mikey? It's not up here. So, I'll just take this. This is fine. All right. Julie Lancel.
Great. Thank you so much. I was glad to hear you bring up the issue, Councilmember DeGruy and Mayor Nyheart, about the signs, the sign ordinance. I know when I ran for council, and in the past, we always had to be very careful about where we put our signs and always had to ask for permission from the property owner in order to do it. And that's what the rules are in terms of that. So, and also, I mean, when a person does have to ask for those signs to, you know, ask that the person who put them there be contacted, and then the signs removed, that takes up staff time, and that, you know, is tax dollars also going to, you know, deal with that. And I also appreciated the added comment that Councilmember DeGruy made about businesses as well. It isn't fair to businesses either when people start putting up signs for their businesses with their phone number just hither and thither and wherever. And it's unfair competition. Thought that was a really good point. I also was driving down to Half Moon Bay and noticed their medians there. They've done a beautiful job. I know they had to work really hard to be able to landscape those medians in the way they have. But someone pointed out them, pointed them out to me, and I know you mentioned something about medians. They have a lot of coastal plants. Really looks quite lovely. So, next time anyone's driving down, take a look. It would be beautiful if Caltrans would do that in Pacifica as well. I also wanted to, I know it's getting late, but I also wanted to just review really quickly what I talked about the last time I was here about sales tax. And sales tax is one of the key revenue sources for, to pay for the services that we all want in our city and all expect in our city. And when you compare Pacifica to neighboring communities, South City, Daly City, Colma, we take, we make about, a little over about 12%, you know, 1.4 million in 2011 for Pacifica, and 10 million plus for each of those other cities. So, that is the problem with Pacifica. It's not wasteful spending. It's that we don't have the revenue, and I'm not sure we ever will. I hope we do. I hope things change for us. But sales tax is, every time we shop over the hill, we're paying money to those cities. And that's just the way cities are funded. And it's based on where the business is located. And one last thing I just want to say. I appreciated you bringing up Councilmember and Mayor Vreeland. He was a tremendous advocate for Pacifica. He deserves, you know, only our greatest appreciation. He was a brilliant man.
Thanks, Julie. Thank you so much. Anita Reese, and then Mickey Lawson.
Hello. Anita Reese with the Pacifica Resource Center. And I just wanted to share that this year is our 40th anniversary at the Pacifica Resource Center. And so, we'll be kicking off a year of celebration at the Fog Fest Parade on Saturday, the 27th. And we're inviting folks to walk with us, current and past supporters and volunteers. So, anybody who's interested in walking with us, we'll be meeting at Recology at 9:30. We've got a great float coming down, so hopefully, we'll win it this year, the parade. Each month, we'll also be having a different 40th anniversary festivities, including adopting a planner at the Community Center, which is right near where we have our monthly Produce Mobile. And our Advisory Board Member, Chris Hunter, will also be interviewing and writing histories from community members who've been involved with the Resource Center over our last 40 years. And then, finally, we'll, well, each month, but in April, on April 26th, we are asking folks to save the date. We'll either be doing a stroll or some kind of an event that just honors our 40 years. At Fog Fest, we'll also have an information booth. We have another dollhouse that Penny Blackwell of Skin Reflections has donated to us. That was not decorated, but the furniture was donated by Chris Porter. So, we're really excited to have it on display at Fog Fest. We'll be selling tickets for $40 for 10 in honor of our 40th, and then $5 each. We'll be doing the drawing sometime in October. We haven't exactly figured out that date. I also just wanted to mention that we finished up our back-to-school program. We were able to provide 130 students from 75 families with backpacks and grade-appropriate school supplies. We also were able to provide an additional 15 students from seven families with backpacks and some basic supplies. And that was all possible because of support from the Lions Club, the Coastside Social and Service Club, San Mateo Children's Fund, St. Andrews, and many other individual community members throughout Pacifica. Now, we're turning our attention to the holidays. So, we plan to match 140 up from 100, again, in honor of our 40th, children with generous adoptive family donors. And we'll be sending out letters to families and donors in early October. So, hopefully, we will be able to get all 140 families, 140 children matched with 140 families. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, last, but definitely not least, Mickey Lawson. And I wanted to apologize. I saw a crosswalk on here and assumed it had to do with item number three, which we polled. So, I do have your card.
Okay.
Okay. But it's a different crosswalk you're going to talk about.
Oh, yeah.
Not one related to the schools. Okay.
Yeah. Mayor, council, I live at Casa Pacifica at 1060 Terranova Boulevard, down by, pardon me?
You might want to pull the mic down a little closer.
Oh, I'm short. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry. Down by Oddstad, between Aspen and Oddstad, there's a, it's a senior community, three-story building. We have a crosswalk that crosses in the middle of the property. It goes over to the little center there. The crosswalk can't be seen at night. It can't be seen in the fog. It can't be seen in the rain. But the seniors continue to cross there. One lady got hit last year. We're a senior community of 62 and older. And some of the older are really on their own and need help. And the least I think Pacifica can do is to make a safe crossing there. The light going up the hill that warns of the crosswalk has not been working for months. I don't know if any of you've ever been to Morgan Hill. They light up their crosswalks, or at least paint them so they show in the rain. You can't see this one, and I have pretty good vision with these on. And you can't see it in the rain and the fog. People drive very fast up and down the road, especially after school. And I'm not blaming the kids. I'm blaming the kids' parents because they had to stop whatever their day was and had to go get their kids at school. So, maybe if we could get a little extra police patrol certain times of the day. There's a lot of issues that are involved with us getting across the street safe. I stood there, and a man was eating a sandwich and drove right by me and almost drove over me in an SUV. Again, I'm short, so I don't know if he didn't see me or he just wasn't looking. But it's a real serious issue. And I would like some help from the city to address all these factors that factor into the safety. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that closes oral communications. I will, just as a note, Mr. Ocampo was taking furious notes, so I'm sure that there will be some changes. Thank you for bringing that forward. Okay. With that, we have two items under consideration. We added item number three, and we'll do that first. And that is, you got up correctly, Van. That is the authorization for staff to advertise the sealed bids for the Warning Light School Crosswalk Project. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Van Ocampo, Director of Public Works. The project that you have before you today is the school crosswalk warning, safety project. This project actually will install school pedestrian crossing safety improvements at Ocean Shore, IBL, or Ingrid B. Lacy, Valimar, Ortega, and the Terranova High School. The improvements will include the lighted crosswalk, this was just earlier mentioned. It will also install lighted signs. The warning signs will have lights around them, so it catches the attention of the driver. And will also rehabilitate or replace, remove and replace the existing thermoplastic crosswalk there, so it's more visible. The thermoplastic crosswalks will be refurbished. Back in August of 2013, a call for projects was, a call for pedestrian project was issued by the City-City Association of Governments. And this application that we submitted was coordinated with the school district because we actually use the school district's money as a local match. So, there's really no money coming from the city except staff's time in putting the application, as well as the project plans and specifications, and obviously managing the project itself. In October of 2013, the B-PAC, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, went to Pacifica to tour, and the other cities that have projects. And they actually toured the different sites and evaluated the projects. The projects were ranked because there were more applications received than the available funds. We were fortunate that this project actually received grant funding. Then, B-PAC recommended that this project be awarded $140,000 with $14,000 a 10% match coming from the school district. So, the total project is about $154,000. Then, on, I believe that was May of this year, just this year, May 2014, MTC finally wrote a letter to the city saying that they have allotted the money for this project so that the city can receive it. With that, I'd like to recommend that this project be, I mean, that the City Council authorize staff to advertise the project.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Um, yeah, question. I was just kind of curious as to how the schools were decided because I know there was a parent hit by a car up at Sunset Ridge.
Okay.
And what's the criteria for choosing which sites?
Okay. When they, when we were applying for this grant, we coordinated the project, the sites with the school district. The school district, not long ago, did an assessment of the various schools that they have. They have a report that contains location of their schools and recommended improvements to school. The improvements that we are about to install are on crosswalks that are not traffic signal protected, nor are they stop sign protected. These are the ones that are mid-block that needs the These are the ones that are mid-block, that needs the, that needs the protection by getting the attention of the driver of the vehicle approaching the crosswalk.
Thank you.
Yeah, just point of information, about three years ago now, I think we, on City and County Association of Governments, we turned over the oversight on the Safe Routes to Schools money to the districts by way of the Board of Education for the county. So they pretty much have to say so, but they work with Van, correct?
We worked with him.
Yeah. Any other questions from council? I have one card on this, and that is Teresa Dyer. Well, four has been voted on and passed, so there's, I can't... No, not now, unfortunately. It was item number three that we polled. Okay. Not supposed to talk back and forth, sorry, but if you don't wanna speak, I'm three-word. Okay. So any other comments from council? I would like to, before Councilmember Stone speaks, I would really like to thank him. On this particular project in particular, it's such an example of how we work on committees as a council for our city. And this particular project, you know, we could've ended up below the line, and through a lot of discussion and work, we got the projects funded. And I really appreciate that, and I wanna thank you. That's why we do what we do with the extra meetings at night, so... Okay. Councilmember Stone.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff and thank Van and his team for the grants. Like you mentioned, we did a call and actually did a field trip out here. Talked about projects, so... And then back in, what, 2011, it was a big goal of the councils, 'cause we knew that we didn't have, our financial forecasts for the next couple of years weren't great, so we knew that we were going to have to get out into the county for any type of money for capital improvements. And, which, you know, has been like that for a long time in Pacifica, but we really wanted to make a good effort. And we did a couple different things. And this came from the first goal study session, I think, in 2011. And first off was wanting the council to get out into the county more. And we did a couple programs for that. We actually even set aside a little bit of money that had been cut in past years for things like Council Cities and other things like the Success Summit and places where you can network with councils. And that's been a great success over the last couple of years, as you've seen with all the involvement from the council members here. And then also getting on committees. That was a huge one as well. So this comes out of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee that I was able to get on a couple of years ago, and now chair. And also, that goes to CCAG as well, which Mayor Nyheart is the chair of. So with me vacating council and leaving council in a couple of months, I do encourage somebody to run for B-PAC, because there's good money there. And you just have to pay attention and really, and get the right projects out and work with staff. So it's been a pleasure working with you, Van, on this, and I'm happy we're able to have some of this money back here. And it's really cool that you're able to partner with the school district and staff to come up with that match and work in collaboration with them. And that's just amazing, that we're able to have these improvements with $0. Lots of staff time, and I don't wanna underestimate that, 'cause that is real, and that, there's a lot of expense in that. But thank you for your efforts, and thank you for working with the other agency to come up with that matches. I think it was very smart. So I'll make a motion when everyone's ready.
Go ahead. Yeah, I'll let him talk after.
Okay. I just wanted to move that we authorized staff to advertise for sealed bids for the Warning Light School Crosswalk Project.
You in a sec?
I second.
Okay. And did you wanna say something? And you? Okay. Did you wanna say anything?
I'm just grateful for the work. It's great collaboration. And it's nice to see these kind of things moving forward for the safety of our children. So thank you very much.
Sometimes people don't think that these, this work that we do is much, but I was so struck by, you know, it's 83 million for that overpass on Broadway. 83 million, and 19 million came from STIP funds that CCAG controls. So 5 million from the city. So it was like, you know, we do have some significant influence, and that's incredibly important. That's state transportation improvement is what STIP is about. So please vote. And that passes five to zero. Thank you, Van. And the last item is the adoption of a resolution of the City Council of Pacifica approving the agreement between the City of Pacifica and Stephen Johnson for the premises located on Lindemar Boulevard. Staff report.
Good evening, Council. My name is Michael Perez, the Director for the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Department. And tonight, we have the lease for the Stephen Johnson Photography Studio at Sanchez. Stephen Johnson's been a tenant for 10 years, functioning as an upscale photography studio and gallery and teaching facility. Both the city and Mr. Johnson desire to enter into a one-year agreement. The amount is 1,883 per month, $22,596 for the year. The city bills utilities in addition to that. The term is just for the one year. A couple other things that we've made some changes to. Mr. Johnson will not have his exclusive parking, but will be able to reserve parking for workshops that are scheduled. We'll be taking down any sort of exclusive parking on the property at all. That includes for the dog park as well. And that's really about it. And we've upped the insurance requirement that's a little more in line with 10 years from when we did it last time, and that's about it.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Okay, I have no lights. I do have a couple cards on this issue. Bernard Halloran, am I pronouncing correctly? Huh?
Yeah, I'll leave.
Okay. And Stephen Johnson.
I'll keep my comments very brief. I can't help but start by acknowledging the loss of Jim Vreeland as well. He was a friend and someone whose campaigns I'd worked for, and gave so much to this community for so many years. And I think was a good demonstration of belief in the ability of government to do good. Jim thoroughly believed that, and that's why he spent so much of his time that we got to know him in public service. So the losses felt deeply by many of us, and I wanted to take a moment of my time to express my condolences to Lori and the kids as well. On the lease, which is a more simple and straightforward matter, thanks to all of the council members who during this past year have taken the time to come by and see the studio that I've built and the educational facility and the gallery. I appreciate the offer of another year's worth of lease. I think it was a good time period for both of us in terms of trying to see how we can make sure things just work the best they can possibly work in the community. I appreciate the city attorney's input on the lease and making changes that seem reasonable to everybody. And just look forward to working with the city, with our city manager, and with Mike, and continuing to try and just make this the best town that we can, as well as trying to find ways of working both with the Chamber of Commerce and the council to continue to give Pacifica more credit for the wonder that it is. As you know, I do a calendar of Pacifica every year. We have note cards, things like that. But we've started a deeper relationship with the Chamber of Commerce as well, and we hope that those kinds of things can just help to promote the city for what it is and the great value and faith I think we all have that is a destination. It's underappreciated, and as a community, we love it so deeply that we can make those things come together. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I have no other cards on this, and seeing no one else jumping up to come forward, bring it back to council. Councilmember DeGruy.
I just wanna say, if anybody hasn't visited the studio, I think it's a great idea, and I thank you for being here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, thanks. I really appreciate the invitation out to the studio. It's a beautiful place, and again, I encourage people to go visit it and see what he's contributing to our city and the chamber. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Councilmember DeGruy.
I will make a motion that we adopt the resolution of the City Council of Pacifica approving the agreement between the City of Pacifica and Stephen Johnson for the premises located at 1220 C Lindemar Boulevard, located in the Pacifica Center for the Arts Facility.
And Mayor Protem.
I second.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and...
Can I make a comment?
Sure. Oh, missed it.
I just wanted to, I have a little different take on this. My feeling is, just with a private business, I think we should be charging something closer to market rent, which this isn't. It's about half of that, at least. And/or take the space and make it part of the arts center as well. It's in that building. One of the two. But I just don't, it's hard for me to have this amount of rent for a private business in a city facility. I think it should be closer to the market, so I'll be voting no tonight.
I guess since that got brought up, I just wanna publicly explain that our discussions, you know, that was one of the, well, my concern was, for one of those, I would underscore the same concern. That's what I wanna say. But a year will give us an opportunity to both work on those issues. So I appreciate that. Okay. Anybody else? Please vote. Okay. Thank you very much. It passes four to one no. Four yeses, one no. Okay. That brings us to closing the meeting in honor of our former mayor, our council member for 15 years, and a tremendous advocate for our beaches and our trails and so many public works projects. We all miss him deeply, and I thank everyone for coming on Sunday. And I just wanna make sure that people keep good thoughts. We left, he left two very young men that were delightful, but they're 13 and eight. So keep a good thought in your heart. Thank you.